Okay, the regular meeting of the City Council of Morganton, February 3rd, 2020 is now called to order. I'll ask Chris Jernigan if he'll please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Stand and face the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to call Reverend Larry Britt, the chaplain from Morganton Department of Public Safety, to lead us in an invocation, please.
Thank you. Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you that by your might we have been brought into safety to this day. We thank you also that there are people who are willing to share with you in the job of keeping us safe. We thank you that there are people who are willing to step forward and help to govern us in our ups and downs. Tonight, we thank three of these men for their service and ask for your continued blessings on them in their future endeavors. We ask your blessing on our deliberations this evening. Keep us mindful that we are ever walking in your sight. Bless and keep us by your boundless might, we pray through Jesus Christ, our Lord. Amen.
Larry, thank you so much. I'd like to introduce counsel to my far right, Wendy Cato, Mayor pro temp, Chris Jernigan, City Council, Louis Vina, City Attorney. I'm Ronnie Thompson, your mayor, Sally Sandy, our city manager, Butch McSwain, City Council, Chris Hawkins, City Council, Kelly Russell, our recording secretary, and Becky Brinkley, our interpreter for the deaf community. We have several retirement resolutions tonight. I'd like to read those resolutions, please. Our first resolution is... Let's see. I got it here. First to us, Chief. Let's do, consideration of resolution honoring Robin Triplett. That resolution reads, whereas Robin Triplett was employed by the City of Morganton as public safety officer trainee in the Public Safety Department on August 30th, 1999, completed his field training and promoted to Public Safety Officer 1 on November 3rd, 1999, promoted to Public Safety Officer 2 on June 2nd, 2001, promoted to Sergeant on August 29th, 2005, promoted to Lieutenant on June 24th, 2017, promoted to Lieutenant 3rd on July 6th, 2019, and whereas Robin Triplett has faithfully served the City of Morganton in the Public Safety Department, building his skills by earning his North Carolina Advanced Law Enforcement Certificate in 2011, sharing his knowledge as a fire instructor since 2005, and protecting the community as a member of the hazardous materials team since 2008. In these ways and many others, he has given of his time and efforts for the benefit of the citizens of the City of Morganton for 22 years and six months. And whereas Robin Triplett retired from the City of Morganton as Lieutenant 3 in the Public Safety Department on February 1st, 2020, and whereas the City Council wishes to officially recognize the contributions of Robin Triplett and express their appreciation for a job well done, now therefore be it resolved by the City of Morganton that the mayor present this resolution to Robin Triplett, adopted this third day of February 2020, Ronnie Thompson, Mayor, Sally Sandy, City Clerk. So if Robin will come forward, please, and I'm going to ask Councilman Butch McSwain to present that resolution. Do I have a motion to accept that resolution?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor of the resolution, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I guess I should have taken a vote before we proceeded to do this.
You will.
Bobby, just my honor to present on behalf of the mayor and the city council. I think our time overlaps and I can thank you on behalf of the staff too for the time that you've served and wish you the very best in the coming years. Thank you.
Robin, before you... Go ahead, if you... Robin, we're going to give you a chance to speak if you'd like to say something.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, City Council. The other day, we had a little celebration of this day coming up at Community House, and I got to say a few words then, and I got to thank a lot of people. Inadvertently left somebody very important out, and that's my family. I guess in my mind, that goes without saying, is our families. But, you know, I got to thinking about all the times, all the days, sometimes weeks, sometimes months, that I didn't come home, either for training or for things that's happened here and took me away from home for a while, you know, and all the things they had to go through without me there. And, you know, the nights when I'd be late coming in, or the mornings I wouldn't show up and they'd get up and I still wasn't home, you know. To me, it was just another day at work, and to them, it was something different. So, I want to thank my family for putting up with all that, all these years. I thank all the people I've worked with and those who came before me, including Chief Rector. It's one of the few that were at Public Safety before me. There's a few left. But, all those that have taught me throughout the years and helped me become the person that I wanted to be, and still learning, so we'll see what comes next. But, thank you all. And I want to thank the City Council for all the things, all the support you've given Public Safety and City of Morganton as a whole, the things you're doing and making good progress. I want to see it continue.
Robin, we have one more motion before you sit down. I'd like to call the council's attention to that motion.
Make a motion to declare a weapon Glock 22 Gen 4 pistol serial number XHY513XPH031 and a Carins 1044 DSR Fire Services Helmet as surplus, sold for $1 and presented to retired Lieutenant Triplett at another time.
I have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Motion passes. Congratulations. Thank you so much.
And I'm buying that for you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Robin.
Okay. Next on our agenda is another resolution. This resolution honoring Ronnie Rector. Whereas Ronnie Rector joined the City of Morganton as a Public Safety Officer Trainee in the Public Safety Department on August 22nd, 1994, and continued to build his career through transfers and various ranks accumulating in his promotion to Director of Public Safety on March 1st, 2014. And whereas Ronnie Rector has strived to grow as a Public Safety Officer throughout his career, achieving numerous certifications and licenses, including the North Carolina Advanced Law Enforcement Certificate, certification, and the National Fire Officer 3, as well as completing the Administrative Officers' Management Program at NC State University in 1999, earning his Masters of Public Administration from Appalachian State University in 2006, and completing the FBI National Academy in 2009. And whereas Ronnie Rector has faithfully served the City of Morganton and the Public Safety Department and has given of his time and talents for the benefit of the citizens of the City of Morganton for 28 years, whereas Ronnie Rector retired from the City of Morganton as Chief and Director of Public Safety Department on February 1st, 2020, and whereas the Morganton City Council wishes to officially recognize the contributions of Ronnie Rector and express their appreciation for a job well done, now therefore be it resolved by the City of Morganton that the mayor present this resolution to Ronnie Rector, adopted this third day of February 2020, Ronnie Thompson, Mayor, Sally Sandy, Clerk. Do I have a motion to accept this resolution?
So moved.
Do I have a motion, a second motion?
Second.
Okay. All in favor of that resolution, please signify by saying aye. We need a... The motion passes. I have a second motion for Mr. Rector.
I make motion to declare the weapon Glock 23 Gen 4 pistol serial number XPH020 and the Paul Conway Fire Services Helmet, serial number LHM71509 as surplus, sold for $1 and presented to retired Chief Rector at another time.
I have a motion to have a second.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye. Motion passes. I'll ask Chris Hawkins if he'll make that presentation.
So if I don't pay for this, do we get to cancel it?
Chief, if you'll come forward, please, chief. I'm going to ask Chris Hawkins to make that presentation.
It is an honor for me to present this resolution to you, honoring your 28 years of service to the City of Morganton, most recently as Chief and Director of Public Safety. Thank you for serving us, thank you for protecting all of us, and thank you for helping make Morganton a great place to live and raise a family. And on behalf of City Council and everybody here, I wish you all the best in your retirement. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I lost my voice this weekend. Great timing. I'll try to squeak through a few words, if that's okay with everyone. First, I would like to publicly thank the mayor and each council member, as well as your predecessors, for allowing me the privilege of serving this community as the Director of Public Safety. Your vision, leadership, and support is invaluable to this city. To the department heads, I want to thank each of you for accepting me as your peer and allowing me to be a part of your team. The services provided to the citizens of Morganton are second to none, and this is in large part due to the department heads who serve as leaders in this city each and every day on the streets. They put your visions, your thoughts, and your words into actions. To the community, thank you for the trust you have placed in me and in public safety over the past years. We are a great city, not because of what we have, but because of the people that live here. It has been an honor to serve each of you. Sally, thank you for taking a chance on me. You have earned my trust, respect, admiration, and appreciation. I can't imagine a more capable city manager anywhere. Thank you for your leadership, vision, compassion, and the respect you treated me with. The City of Morganton is lucky to have you. To the men and women of Public Safety, it has been a true privilege to serve with you. I know that Public Safety is staffed with the finest police officers and firefighters this country has to offer. Thank you for your dedication, commitment, and professionalism. I will miss each of you dearly. Thank you, everyone, for the opportunities you have afforded me. May the glory be to God. Thank you all. Best of luck with your future. I know you've got plans to take care of some other business, so congratulations. Next on our agenda is a service pen. That will be to Ms. Jackie Kane in our Development Design Senior Administrative Specialist for 20 years. Sally, would you like to make any comments about this?
Y'all are killing me tonight. First of all, I'd like to say thank you to the chief. Everything you say, I can throw right back at you, and I really appreciate it. It's been a great experience and an awesome professional relationship, but a fantastic personal relationship, and this community was lucky to have you. And the trust that you have instilled in all of us, and the confidence in what you have done for the community has been fantastic, and the department. So, I wish you and your family the best. And I'll cry again on Friday, too, so... And to Jackie. So, here we are. Jackie and I were talking the other day. There aren't many of us in this building who came over from the old city hall and who have been here, and we are almost in this building for 18 years because my youngest son was born the week that we moved into this building, as Will was born just about a month and a half or so after that, a couple months. 20 years.
That's right.
And here we go. And look forward to the next few years. It has been a delight for me to get to serve with you for all of these years.
I should have not followed. I'm a crier anyway.
Oh, this is killing me.
Crying over having 20 years. It's just, you know, you follow this, and you get weepy because you form a relationship with your peers, a family relationship, because you're here every day. So it's an honor to work at the city and to see everything grow and to know that we have, that I've got 20 years, and I ride by things that I think I remember when. So that's exciting. Got a few more years of it. It's good. Thank you.
Jackie, thank you for your service.
Thank you, Jackie.
Some great employees. Under public advocacy, one announcement is Chief Rector's retirement reception is Friday, January the 7th at 11... February the 7th. Thank you, Louis. At 11:30 a.m. to 1:30 with remarks at 12:15. Our upcoming events are comma, the Ragtime Society Orchestra on Thursday, February the 6th at 7:30, The Color Purple Thursday, February 27th at 7:30, and The Rhythm of the Dance Saturday on February the 29th at 7:30. I'd like to say something to your public comments, and if they can zoom in on this news article, we chat, you can zoom on it, but it's making the cut. I'm real pleased about the city and our standing, I guess, from Planet Ware, naming us one of the 13 top small cities to really come and enjoy life. So, we, I want to thank the staff, the downtown staff, our downtown development association, all the people that make downtown and all of Morganton great. It's a great honor for Morganton to be named, and people all over the world will see that. So, it's great for our staff. Next is consideration approval of the minutes. I believe we have two items on the consent agenda. Is that correct?
We do. Consent agenda tonight includes minutes from the regular meeting on January 6th, minutes from a special meeting held on January 21st, and then the audit contract with Elliot Davis is the second year of a five-year contract, and the fiscal year 1920 cost is $39,000.
Would any council like to remove any item from the consent agenda? If not, I'll ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Motion passes. Under new business, we have a public hearing for the City of Morganton Consolidation Plan Fiscal Year 2020-2024. Okay. We need to have a... Call it.
Oh, yeah.
We are now in session for the public hearing for the Morganton City Council Consolidated Plan Fiscal Year 2020-24. Would anybody from the public like to speak concerning this consolidation action plan?
And I think Lisa's going to give us a summary of it first.
Okay. So this is for our community development block grant funds that we get every year. So every five years, we have to do a consolidated plan that sort of, we look forward five years to see what we want to do with our funding. The past few years, we've been doing our small business loan, our grants to nonprofits, our infrastructure projects, and then we've done some clearance and some acquisition. So we can look at those items and been talking with lots of people about some ideas of some things that we want to do. So today, we just want to see if anyone has any public comment or ideas that you'd like to give.
And then the process continues, and once we've taken the comments and everything that happens between now and April, at the April 6th council meeting, we will conduct a second public hearing that will address any comments and input that we get between now and then.
That's right.
So would any one present like to speak concerning the consolidated plan? We have someone approaching, Lisa. If you'll identify yourself and where you live.
Good evening. I'm Beverly Carlton. I live at 111 River Hills Lane here in Morganton. Thank you for this time. I would like to make a suggestion about the consolidated plan. Understand that for years, you've practically been doing the same thing with the money that's available for the nonprofits and the entitlement money, period. I would like for you to consider using it in other ways, if that's possible. A lot of the other municipalities or city governments use their CDBG money working with community development corporations in particular in order to help with the housing issues in those cities. The nearest one that you can look at would be Charlotte Mecklenburg. Of course, it's a larger city, but it's a model that you could look at to see how they utilize those funds. One of the things I would like to suggest at some time in the future is to consider a bond or a percentage of a tax to be set aside to do, to work with nonprofits, especially those capital improvements that nonprofits need for their facilities, and the other funding that may be needed for homelessness and other issues. We have a lot of issues here in Morganton that are causing people to become homeless, and we need to address those issues. And evidently, there is not a minority affairs committee that actually addresses the issues that have an impact on residents, and we need to look at those kinds of things. For example, some people become homeless because they live in public housing. And in public housing, if they get a job, they have to start paying the rent from the day that they actually got that job, which means that they haven't really had time to catch up with their bills and stuff like that, those things that they need to catch up on. And these people become homeless. So when we're looking at why people are homeless, let's look at some of the policies and procedures that do have an impact on those people, especially in public housing and probably in some other rental situations. Those things that we are passionate for, we would really like to work with you closer as a community development corporation, just like the other cities do with their nonprofit community development corporations. So I would like, I'm asking, that that consideration be given for future consideration of how you work with nonprofits in the city in order for them to be more productive, in order for them to also make advances for the residents of our city, which is the reason why they're there. Thanks.
Thank you. Would any more of them like to speak? If not, we will close the public hearing. And Sally, as you said, we will meet again April 6th to have a second public hearing, correct?
Absolutely. Do we need to take a motion tonight that this happened, or just record that it happened?
Just record that it happened, then just, you know, give me permission to proceed with the development of the...
Do we don't do the motion? I'll entertain a motion, just to make it official.
Motion to proceed with the development of the consolidated action plan for fiscal year 2020 to 2024.
I have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Motion passes. Next on our agenda is consideration of grant award of entitlement funds to nonprofits. Sally.
Back in October, we awarded $22,235 to nonprofits in a competitive program that we have done with this money for several years. We are limited to a certain dollar amount of the monies that we get. As a CDBG entitlement city, we get a small portion of dollars each year. We don't, and because we are that, we don't get to compete in the bigger programs for larger projects and things like that, infrastructure projects and that kind of thing. Part of our action plan for the previous years has been this nonprofit grant program. At the time, we distributed the whole money. We have found out that $1,406 of that is not going to be able to use, be used by the entity that we had awarded that to. So would ask that you come back and consider using that to make a further grant to the outreach center. We were unable to fund the whole amount that they requested this year due to the limitation in the dollars. They were awarded $5,399 in October. Would ask that you consider diverting the $1,406 to them. If we do not spend it on this this year, then basically it goes away because we have designated this much for our nonprofit grant program.
What's the wish for council?
Motion to award fiscal year 2019 entitlement funds to the outreach center in the amount of $1,406.
I have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Discussion by council. No discussion? All in favor, say aye. The motion passes. Next on our agenda is the consideration of a resolution adopting the Uniform Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan. Sally.
Okay. We have with us tonight Mike Willis, who is the Burke County Fire Marshal and Emergency Management Director. To talk with us about this plan is something that we do every five years.
Mike Willis.
Sally, I appreciate it. I don't know how many of you were around when this happened before in 2013. This is a kind of a new venture that came out in 2013 of the Uniform Region. That encompasses Alexander, Burke, Colwell, and Catawba Counties. By law, if you're not understanding hazard mitigation defined, it's any sustained action taken to reduce or eliminate long-term risk to human life property from hazards. And if you're familiar with the Robert Stafford Act, this all falls under that. And I think I got caught in the same thing Chief Rector had, because I'm losing my voice too. Congress passed the Disaster Mitigation Act of 2000, and that established a whole new requirement realm for mitigation planning. And Section 322 of that DMA makes the hazard mitigation plan an eligibility requirement for pre and post-disaster funds. So, kind of what that means is any hazard mitigation money that we want to request, we've got to have this plan in place to do. So, if we fall eligible, and which we always have, the state's allowed up to 7% of hazard mitigation money to come back to them. So, what we're trying to do is get all the municipalities and townships on board and get them to adopt this plan. We could sit and talk about it all night, but it's 1,309 pages. I don't think we want to go over all that tonight. But representatives from all the municipalities did have a part in this. Phil Luckadoo and Scott Luckadoo with y'all was part of our planning committee, and they were a part of this through the whole time. So, I feel like the city's interests were represented. It's the same as the other townships and the counties. So, what we're asking for as a whole, as a body, if you would adopt this resolution, then we can submit this as a package to the state so we can all be on board.
And we did the planning for the whole uniform, correct?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
What's the wish for council?
Motion to approve a resolution adopting the Uniform Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan.
Have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Any discussions? Any questions for Mike? I don't really want to go through that many pages, but we appreciate you and our staff going through that many pages for us. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hearing no further. Chris, do you have a question?
Done.
Okay. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Motion passes. Mike, thanks so much. Next is consideration of award of a contract for the construction of Catawba River Soccer Complex Phase 3. Sally.
You are well aware that for several years, we have been working on Phase 3 of the soccer complex. The project started years ago, and we are now finally getting to the point where we think we're going to be able to achieve the initial vision... think we're going to be able to achieve the initial vision, which was to have six fields out there. We were successful. Parks and Rec were successful in applying to the state for some Parks and Recreation Trust Fund dollars. We've received $385,000 from that. We also received funding from the Morgan and Recreation Foundation for this project, from Carolina's Healthcare Blue Ridge, from Case Farms, and, and from Linda Wall, the Linda Wall family. And also a small grant from Electricities to, to help with part of this project. The budget is $1,410. We received bids on January the 16th. Five bids were received. The lowest responsible bidder that we received, responsive bid we received that day came from Wilkie Construction in the amount of $1,591,585.80. It always kills me that they have cents in these bids, these bigger dollars. So obviously, that is over our budget. So the staff spent the next week or so in negotiating with the low bidder and talking to them about the project. How would we value engineer it? What would we change? What would we do? How can we accomplish the project? In doing so, the, the first thing that we asked to do was to take the amenities out of their part of the project. But very important and, and really want Chrissy to get this, we are not removing those from the project. Correct. So we are going to take those out and handle them ourselves. It would have been nice to have that as a part of the project and have the grading and everything for that coordinated, but this is nothing new to us. We're not, you know, if we ever got bids and did something that we didn't have to value engineer and do part of ourselves, I think we'd probably all pass out. So we're asking to take those things out, which would be the playground equipment, the picnic shelter, and the dog park. We still plan to do those because the project's pretty lacking without them. And our, our donors have, have indicated they are very interested in the whole package happening. So what we would like to do is make those work within the budget, move some monies around. We've got some maintenance monies. Take a look at that and figure it out within this year's budget, and we will do that. We would like to ask you to award a contract for $1,400,000 to Wilkie. We believe the engineering that we've done on it doesn't sacrifice the quality of the product that we're going to be getting.
Will that extra $10,000 go towards the smaller projects that we're going to complete?
Yes.
What is the wish of council?
I'll make the motion to award a contract to Wilkie Construction Company in the amount of $1,400,000 for the Phase III of the Catawba River Soccer Complex.
I have a motion, have a second?
Second.
Questions from council? Sally, when will grading start possibly? Any idea?
Well, we hope with this award tonight, then we'll get everything finalized, mobilized. We're talking this spring. We'd like to be springing in Mayish, you know, just Mayish, weather permitting and all of that. But it's, the timing is important. I keep looking at them like they're going to make this happen, right? The timing is important for two things. Obviously, we don't want to miss another growing season. That's really important. Second of all, the $385,000 from Parks and Recreation Trust Fund has a time limit on it, and we're already into that process, and we certainly don't want to jeopardize those dollars.
Any further questions?
I'd like to make a comment in that if we look at how the staff helped with the skateboard park and other things that we have done, I don't doubt for one minute the quality won't be what we would like for it to be, and thank you guys.
Any other comments?
This kind of goes along with the mayor's comment. What's the estimated timeframe once we break ground to complete that? Because I know it was mentioned that with six soccer fields, we could host tournaments and all that ripple effect it'll have for our local economy, and excited about that. Okay.
Wow.
Great. Thank you, Ron.
That's great.
So we'd probably be in time for the spring season of soccer. I mean, depending on the growing, we would hope that spring of '21 would be when we'd be in that whole process.
Great.
Had a motion, a second, discussion. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Motion passes. Next is consideration of amendments to an ordinance concerning keeping livestock and farm animals. I'm going to ask our city attorney to handle the livestock questions tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. These are issues that we have visited, I believe, in the past. The primary purpose for bringing it before you tonight is that both the Development Design Department and myself, as city attorney, realize there are still some places in our general code of ordinances that aren't exactly aligned with the zoning ordinance, and also that we had a few issues that need to be clarified. And that's what we are attempting to do with what we proposed. Very briefly, the, there are about three or four items. One, to make clear the definition of livestock, which was confusing before, frankly. To be clear, that it's a cloven-hoofed mammal, horses, cows, sheep, goats primarily, excluding swine and excluding wild or exotic animals. And also to specify a distinction between large livestock and small miniature breeds, mostly would be the small. To, secondly, to state that the number of animals that may be kept shall, for small livestock, the tract has to be at least one acre, large livestock, at least two acres, and there cannot be more than two animals livestock per acre. Third, to clarify the setback restrictions, and what this is a proposal is that the barn or structure has to be at least 100 feet from the property boundary, and any pasture, pen, containment area has to be at least 50 feet from the property boundary. And finally, we've dealt with domestic chickens before, and we already allow those. Staff realizes that there are lots within the town already, within our city limits, where chickens are being kept that are smaller than one acre. And this is basically a suggestion that we would accept lots of as small as one half acre, provided that the, their coop or containment area is at least 50 feet from the property line and at least 100 feet from any neighboring residence. And that's more a matter of just conceding to reality. Wouldn't change the numbers allowed, wouldn't change the fact that roosters are not allowed. So those are our proposals, and they were made, the density and the setback requirements which vary widely from town to town, but those are fairly common, or at least within the range of what other cities in our region permit.
And the reality is more people are raising their own eggs. I mean, they've got chickens to harvest their own eggs.
And as far as livestock is concerned, we're always getting questions about horses and cows, goats. There are quite a few places, there aren't many large tracts in the city that you might have a lot of animals on, but there are modest-sized tracts, one, two, three acres, where people want to keep a horse, a cow, or whatever.
What's the wish of council?
Motion to amend Part 8, Chapter 2 of the city's Code of Ordinances to clarify regulations on the keeping of livestock or farm animals in the city as set out in the proposed ordinance.
I have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Discussion. So Louis, the roosters are still out?
No roosters.
No roosters. And, and chickens, if the coop is 50 feet?
From the property line.
And 100 feet from a residence.
That's correct.
Number of, quantity of chickens a person could have?
Still five. And, and it's not just chickens. It could be ducks, guineas, that sort of thing.
Quail.
Quail. I guess it could. Domestic fowl.
Okay. Any further discussion about livestock? Butch, you have any questions about livestock? You're good?
Yes.
Okay. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Motion passes. Okay, considerate. Next is consideration of an amendment to personnel policy concerning nepotism.
This is Russ.
Russ. Call on our HR personnel, person Russ, if you'll bring us up to date, please.
That I will. Over the past several months, there's been a considerable discussion about the city's policy regarding the employment of family members. The practice of employing relatives can lead to difficult issues, everything from favoritism to discrimination, possible conflicts of interest, and even more so, even the perception of these improprieties. And at the same time, weighing those, we have to weigh those against the needs that we have to get, that the city needs to get qualified employees to do the city's business. Anti-nepotism policies serve to address these issues by regulating the employment of relatives and others with intimate relationships or an interest in another individual's employment with the city. While most local governments have some sort of policy regarding the employment of family members, the specifics of each policy vary widely from city to city, depending on the different sizes of the agency, the population, the labor pools, operating structures, and even the philosophy of the leadership. We've researched and evaluated numerous policies across the state over the past few months and worked to design a reasonable policy that aims to prevent the appearance of impropriety while allowing acceptable practices and the employment of family members. We worked with council and management to arrive at a draft being considered tonight. We believe it addresses the critical issues while not being overly restrictive. Some of the key changes being proposed are revising the definition of immediate family to include aunts, uncles, nieces, and nephews, including individuals who are living in the same household who share a relationship comparable to a traditional immediate family relationship will be subject to this policy. Authorizing the city manager and HR director in very limited cases to make exceptions to the policy where existing employees become in-laws or step relations through no action on their own parts, and updating and clarifying the rules concerning existing employees who marry or begin a relationship that would fall outside the acceptance of the policy. We believe these changes will clarify the policy and ensure citizens that the city is committed to hiring and retaining the best employees possible while avoiding favoritism or bias, either real or perceived, in Employment Matters.
Thank you, Russ. What's the motion? What's the wish of council?
Make a motion to approve amendment to the anti-nepotism Section 2.05b of the city's personnel policy to revise the definition of immediate family member to include aunts, uncles, nieces, and nephews. Provide that immediate family members includes individuals who cohabit in a consensual long-term relationship as if married, as well as the immediate family of such individuals. Authorize the city council, city manager, and HR director to make exceptions to the policy where existing employees become in-laws or step relations through no action of their own parts, and clarify the subsection governing active employees who marry or begin a cohabiting or consensual relationship.
I have a motion. Thank you, Chris. Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
The HR committee met at length and wanted to get the verbiage right, wanted to get what we felt was fair for, that would cover us for a long term, that we would, the terminology is correct and people, it's easier to understand if there's any corrective measures to, to happen. And I feel like with staff that this, this covers what we need in order to protect not only the employees we have, but future employees.
Thank you. Butch?
Well, just to echo that, the more we looked at the policy, the, the more confusing it can get. And I do think we hammered out a very logical. The appearance part is what is certainly important to us. We want it to, to look right to the, to the citizens and to the staff. So I think we have, have presented a pretty good resolu, or change here.
I wish to thank Wendy and Butch for serving on Personnel Committee. It was tough. Y'all spent a bunch of hours on this, so thank you so much.
May I make one comment?
You may.
One thing, and for the public, that might be a little confusing, confusing is the mention of allowing the city manager and HR director to make exceptions to policy in certain cases where existing employees become in-laws or step relations through no action of their own. What we're referring to there, and this easily could happen, is a situation where two existing employees' parents, brothers and sisters, whatever, marry or become cohabiting. And of course, our employees have no control over that, but as a result of that, they've become in-laws or step relatives. And it seemed to us and to the Personnel Committee that we need to, that has happened. We've already faced that question. And we need to be clear that it, it seemed harsh to punish those people when they had nothing, no control over that. And so, and they may not even know they're step relatives in, in many of those cases.
Our employee didn't take the action, someone else.
Someone else did. And that was why that is added in there.
Any further discussion?
I know I made some comments at our meeting in June about this. I like this proposal. As I mentioned previously, I work in management, and it's very important to try to get this as, as right as possible. And I appreciate all the time and effort that folks have put into this. I think this is, will help us promote fairness and the sense of fairness, and I think it's a policy that, that will work really well for the city of Morganton.
Thank you, Chris.
Mr. Mayor, I'll add my thanks to those who worked so hard on this, because a strong nepotism policy is an important thing that we need to, need to have, one of the best that we can, and I appreciate the staff and the council members who've worked on it.
Great. Hearing no further discussion, all in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Motion passes. One, one more item on the books, and that is consideration of appointments to the Morganton Housing Authority. These are oral appointments. I am going to reappoint Reverend Tom Bland, Marcia Peterson, and Scott Carrico to the Morganton Housing Authority Board for a term to expire February 1, 2025. Is there anything else to come before Morganton City Council?
Yes, I thought of one thing that I didn't think of earlier, and he doesn't know that I'm going to do this, but earlier, we had the chief's retirement, and, and it strikes me, the timing of it's weird. Normally, someone would come like the month after they had retired and all of that. And I was going to ask Tony if he will come up, and so we can introduce, not like the public doesn't know him, but Tony Loudermilk is interim chief of public safety, and we'll get his face out there now so he can be the one that everybody cusses.
Tony, welcome. Would you like to say something?
I'm just excited about the opportunity and look forward to working with the other city staff and continue working with my fellow employees.
Thank you, Tony. Thank you.
Very excited, too.
Hearing no further business, we are adjourned.